Good evening and welcome to the Lompoke City Council Meeting. Thank you for joining us. To all of you who are sitting in the back row, you can come forward. We have gotten a couple more up here in the front. City Clerk, would you have roll call, please?
Council Agency Member Martner. Council Agency Member Costa.
Present.
Council Agency Member Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Protam Vice Chair Lingal.
Here.
Mayor Chair Lynn.
Here.
Okay, and in a slight error on the mayor's fault, our part, we didn't get our acknowledgement on for our invocation, but Pastor Bernie Federman is here with us this evening. Would you all please rise?
Let us pray. Dear God, we pause and stand before you in gratitude for the many gifts you've given to us. Help us to never take for granted the things you have done, the people you've placed in our lives, and this wonderful place we get to live called Lompoke. You have been faithful and kind to us during this past year, and as we walk into this brand-new year, we put our trust and our hope in you. This being the first council meeting of 2011, we reflect on the many tasks ahead for our city, and we ask you to lead us and guide us. Help us to be good stewards of this town and the resources you provide. Give our city leaders and staff the wisdom to know what is right and the courage to do it. During this meeting, remind those here that when words are spoken, you are listening; when decisions are made, you are guiding; for you care about each one of us, every person in this community. We do not know all that tomorrow will bring, but we do know that if we offer our hearts to you, you will help us and show us the way. Give our councils, our commissions, the ability to listen, to learn, to reason together, to be sure what we face is beyond us, so we put our trust and our hope and our faith in you. Calling upon you reminds us of the truth of who you are and the reality of your greatness. We are reminded also that we are imperfect people; you are a perfect God; you are all wise and we are not. Because of our frailty, we will hurt each other, and when we do, we ask that we would seek your forgiveness and those that we hurt. Watch over our community; be with those in need, and may we all be an extension of your love and your kindness to others. Use our lives to add values to the life of others. Help us to be supportive of those who serve and protect us, our military, our police, our fire, and those willing to go in harm's way on our behalf. May your hand of grace and peace be upon our mayor, our council, our city administrator, our city staff, and all our employees. May your grace be shed upon our land, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
City Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Audience and Viewers. Tonight's City Administrator's Status Report includes one status report submitted by Public Works Senior Civil Engineer Michael Luther on the status of the Dick Dewey's Community and Senior Center. This is the fourth project status report, and since the last report, the prime contractor, AWI Builders, has completed placement of the interior rough plumbing within the existing slab, poured footings for the new interior columns, and has continued submitting the required project documentation to the city's construction manager, Harris and Associates, for review. To date, there have been no extra work requests, no contract change orders have been approved or requested, and the project is on schedule. For the next project status report to council in February, Mr. Luther will provide council a brief presentation at the regular council meeting of February 15th. And this concludes the City Administrator's Status Report.
City Administrator, would it be possible to have the chief share with the audience the draft information he just gave us?
Yes, I'd like to invite Chief Timothy, Police Chief Timothy Dabney, to the podium to share the information.
Mayor, Members of City Council, those of you in the audience. As we come to the close of a calendar year, typically every police department across our nation will compile statistics that are forwarded to the Department of Justice for their respective state and to the United States Department of Justice. And those common crimes that are reported to the Department of Justice are known as the Part I crimes. They consist of crimes that are common amongst, across state boundaries. And I'm pleased to tell you that our preliminary numbers, these are preliminary only, they're still working through all the details to make sure all of the compiler errors are accounted for, but our preliminary numbers indicate that total felony crimes for the city of Lompoke are down 13.22 percent for the 2010 year over 2009, and the total Part I crimes, including felonies and misdemeanors, are down nearly 6 percent at 5.79. Most notably, most of our major crimes such as robbery or aggravated assault, burglary, and homicide are down. There were an uptick, small upticks, in sexual assaults, grand larceny, and auto theft. And by an incremental uptick because of the size of our jurisdiction, to give you an example of that, for instance, in auto theft, there's an increase of 8.51 percent, but looking at the raw numbers, that's an increase of four auto thefts, so 47 in 2009 and 51 in 2010. So it bodes well for crime in our community, and I'm available for any questions should you have any.
Are there any questions for the chief? Councilmember Lingal?
Just, not a question, just a comment. Chief, obviously, I speak probably for the entire city council. I want to congratulate you and your staff on a job well done this past year.
Well, thank you, and one of the things they tell you when you first become a police chief is that if you take credit for crime statistics going down, you get blamed for them when they go up. So although we do have dedicated men and women that work hard to protect the city, there are many, criminologists will tell you, there are many factors. I think it speaks volumes of the quality of people that live in our community that are taking care of their neighborhoods, but thank you.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. All right, now we're up for oral communications. Well, no, I take it back. I skipped one again. Council Redevelopment Agency requests and announcements. Councilmembers. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce that I had a meeting this morning with Ms. Vicki Anderson regarding the murals and the arts in Lompoke and how that will still have a strong part in our city vision. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank our city administrator for the report she gave tonight, keeping us informed of the progress of our community senior center. This is one of the requests that the council had made when we approved the contract, and so far, it's been coming through. She's keeping us informed, she's making sure that the center is on time, on budget, and I just want to thank you again for a job well done. The other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank our city staff, our city administrator, whomever is responsible for the almost overnight process of getting a business set up here in town. If you're driving up and down Ocean Avenue, you'll see the old Honda motorcycle shop now is loaded with RVs. This is a business that necessarily had to set up a month early, almost overnight, and I'm sure the city staff worked very hard in getting that done. So again, I want to congratulate our city administrator and the entire staff on a job well done.
And we did receive two phone calls each, the city administrator and I, thanking us from the individual who's opening it and said we were the friendliest, most helpful place he had ever seen, and that we had gone out of our way to help him. And I think I mentioned before, he was going to open this as a second location, but a retention basin failed next to his other location in Pismo Beach, and he ended up with six feet of water in his business facility. The good news was, he got a little advanced warning and a lot of help from everybody he knew, and they pulled everything out onto the street, and all he had flooded was his shop and his shop equipment, so he is planning on opening on the 15th. However, I think if you wanted to go in there and buy something today, he'd probably be ready for you. Okay, and now for the oral communications. Who would like to speak to us this evening?
Dulce Sin, city resident. Thank you, Mayor, and city council members, and Happy New Year. In the New Year, I thought that I would come and try to bring some happy news, so I have several announcements that I wanted to make you aware of tonight. And the first one has to do with our warming center that we have opened up at Bridge House. You know, I was in a meeting yesterday, and I just wanted to, this is an impromptu, this is not a formal report or anything like this, it's Dulce Sin being an impromptu, proud volunteer with this organization that we've been working so hard to get open on these bitterly cold nights. We were the first warming center in the county to open, and if you recall, those very, very cold nights leading up to Thanksgiving and over the Thanksgiving weekend. We were open for 12 nights in November. We have now been open 30 nights altogether, but the 12 nights in November are particularly important because during those 12 nights, we had 105 beds occupied, and our highest count was 13 individuals who came on two separate nights. And all this report has been provided, of course, to all of our funding organizations and so forth, but those 12 nights were not covered in the county's allocation for the warming center, and so the funding for that has got to come from some other source. We're very grateful to the churches that have rallied to help in our efforts to open up the warming center. And as you recall, the warming center is different from the Bridge House and the emergency shelter services that go on there. People who come to the warming center do not have to take part in any program, they just have to come out of the cold and please don't die. It's a wonderful experience to go out and speak to some of the individuals who have been there, they're very grateful to have that opportunity. Some individuals who are by choice, I think, living on the streets and not willing to come in, have come in for several nights now, knowing that they've been flooded out under the bridge and wherever they might be camping. So at this point, over 30 nights, 233 beds filled in those 30 nights, and we're very grateful to the United Methodist Church, and particularly to Patrick Guthrie, who has been the driving force of our committee, and to the Lompoke Seventh Day Adventist Church, to the Women for Trinity, who came out and cooked Thanksgiving and Christmas dinner for us, to Four Square Church, that has provided food on several occasions, and to all the other volunteers, as well as the city staff who have participated in helping, in particular the police department. It's been a heartwarming experience to be part of the warming center, and I hope that we'll be able to continue to keep it open. Now, I know my time is running out, but something came to my attention, and I may have to step up and speak again, but with the warming center, I want to tell you something. The warming center is not officially open tonight because the word came from the overall supervisor of the warming center in Santa Barbara that it would only be 35 degrees in Lompoke tonight. Santa Maria was allowed to open because it was going to be 34 degrees in Santa Maria. And when I checked the national news weather reports, the weather.gov and weatherchannel.com or whatever, it is scheduled to be at least 31 degrees, that low, tonight. Now, I just want to say that we aren't officially open, but I'll tell you right now, no one will be turned away if they come to the Bridge House to be warmed tonight. And once again, that will be off of the funding grid or whatever, that has very minuscule funding that's been provided for this, but we're very dedicated to this program. The next thing that I wanted to comment on in my last minute is that I wanted to thank Councilmember Costa and Councilmember Lingal for coming to the 2020 Vision Meeting at the Chamber of Commerce where we heard Tim Sales talk about the new market tax credits and what we could possibly do to revive our old town by banding together and really collaborating on that project. We've already set up a meeting with our landlords and the owners of the business there because that's one of the first steps. Are we willing to put some properties together to create a big enough plan to get the type of investment that we need in this community and to have the opportunity to apply for these new market tax credits, which will be going away very soon? It's a very important project. We're going to set down a very ambitious calendar to pull in the funding on this. I hope that if anyone has any questions about how this might be funded, or how we're proceeding or whatever, that you'll get in touch with the 2020 Vision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dulce. Who else would like to speak? Okay, seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication and move to the consent calendar. Written communications. Do we have any written communications? Another chance at oral communications. Who would like to talk to us about something? Come on, you guys, we're going to get out of here early. We've got to get at least one more of you to talk to us.
Dulce Sin, I just wanted to follow up because I ran out of time, that on the warming center, we're going to be having a thank you, a gratitude meeting for our volunteers and the community people who have helped organize it, and it's scheduled for 2:00 on next Thursday. Is that the 13th? I think it is. The 13th or is that the 12th? I don't know, I'm sorry, but it's Thursday, I know that, at 2:00 at the Texas Cattle Company, and they've also donated a great deal of food and some volunteers to our efforts there, too. So I hope to see some faces there, and if anybody's interested in getting involved in our shelter services and our efforts to keep the warming center open on our coldest nights, I greatly appreciate that, and then get in touch with me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your work on that. Who else would like to speak? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications and we'll move to Council Redevelopment Agency requests, comments, and meeting reports. Have we any of those reports? Councilmember Lingal, I know you went to that meeting out on the Air Force Base because I saw you in the minutes. Did you, nothing with the hazardous spill? Oh, you weren't? No, they had you on there. Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. And last, we have adjournment. We are adjourned to January 18th at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for coming, and I hope more of you sit in the front row next week. With regard to the payment vouchers, I will abstain from 295585. And anyone else have a discussion of the items on the consent calendar? We have the approval of the minutes, the approval of the expenditures, the adoption of Building Code Ordinance 1574, the final adoption, the final acceptance of project number FY09S62010, the street rehabilitation project, and these were both discussed at the prior council meeting, so this is their second and final reading. Are there any comments with regard to the consent calendar? Okay, I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that with the one abstention from yourself, by yourself, on one voucher, we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the consent calendar for the audience that the reason that one item I would not be able to vote on was a payment to my company for $35. Are there any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. And that passes 4-0 with one absence. Okay, new business. We have the parking violation bail schedule adjustment by our police chief once again. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, Members of the audience, viewers at home. The item before you this evening is an adjustment to the parking violation bail schedule. Since 1993, the city of Lompoke has based its parking bail schedules and penalties on the Consumer Price Index from the previous year. So the CPI index that the city uses for many other functions is the same index that we use to adjust our parking bail schedules. In 2009, the city was tasked with readdressing those fees and looking at what was legally possible, given the certain geographic area that we are in, and those fees were adjusted in 2009. Unbeknownst to us, the California Legislature was diligently working at a bill titled SB870, which is the Trial Court Trust Fund, which would tap each parking citation with an additional $3 that would be remitted from any local agency to the state for the court trust fund. So that trust fund and that legislation became effective on December 7th, 2010, and so we are again now falling behind in not staying commensurate with the levels that are of what's being taken out of our parking citations by other jurisdictions. To break that down, there are three other pieces of legislation that have happened in the past decade or so that have taken money out of parking citations currently, well, before this action, from each parking citation, there was $9.50 taken by the state for various court fees and functions, and for our data ticket processing, there's an additional $6.88 that approximately, depending on the citation and the cost incurred for appeal process, et cetera, et cetera. So it varies from site to site, but typically, in a $50 parking citation, the city, up until December 7th, would receive $33.88. As of December 7th, we have to remit an additional $3, so that now is $3 less per citation that goes into the general fund. In the vein of what the city has been striving to keep at par, commensurate with the costs the state is putting upon us, we present to you this Resolution Number 5688 that rescinds the previous Resolution 5571, Prenz 09, of the previous parking bail schedule, and it adds the $3 fee that's been added by SB870 to our parking fines. So although the fines vary in, for instance, handicap parking fines are mandated by the state to be much more expensive, but your typical $50 parking site would now be a $53 parking citation. And I think that sums it up, and I am available for any questions should you have any.
So, chief, basically, what you're saying here is a parking ticket that we handle administratively that never sees a court, we're paying them a court fee, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Councilmember Lingal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, if we issue a ticket, is the money we pay to the state, is that due upon receipt of the person paying it or upon issuing the ticket?
It's due upon the receipt of, well, it depends. It depends on which fund you're talking about.
Okay.
There are certain funds that whether or not we've received payment on a parking citation, for instance, if it's reported to the Department of Motor Vehicles, if somebody has an unpaid parking, we're only talking parking citations, these are not moving violations. That's a whole different ballgame. But if they don't pay their citation, and now it gets reported to DMV, and a hold is put on their registration for their car until they pay the parking site, whether or not they pay that, we incur a charge.
Okay. So up until recently, what, a year ago, we went with a company to start helping us collect the parking fees?
Yeah, about a year and a half ago, yes.
And that's been going very well for us?
Yes.
Okay. Up until then, we may have been issuing tickets, receiving no income, yet paying money out to the...
That would have been possible. When we did go with data ticket, that we did go arrears to 2007, I believe it was, on delinquent parking sites, so some of that was made up in the process.
Okay, well, thank you.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Previous to the beginning of the council meeting, I spoke with Chief Dabney, and the one question I wanted to repeat so the public had the answer to that as well, is if we were to incur that $3 cost to the city and not pay that out to the state, thereas not increasing the fee for citizens in the case of a parking ticket, what was the total amount that then would be taken out of the general fund essentially per year? Or rather, not, excuse me, not coming in as an income to the general fund each year?
Roughly, if we issue 1,000 parking sites per year, that would translate to $3,000 per year.
And that money, that's money that goes directly into the general?
Goes directly into the general fund. As I mentioned before, the danger to that is, and it may not seem like a huge amount, but then when the next pending legislation comes down, when the next state grab comes, now you're two steps behind instead of one, and this is just to keep us at par.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thanks, chief. Public comment. Who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment. Is there any further discussion on behalf of the council? I've got to move this picture, I can't see your light. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much to my chagrin, although, as chief stated, we have to stay at par with the state, I would like to motion that we approve Resolution Number 5688, Prenz 11. Do I read the end?
No, I think you've got it for there. That's all we need.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, could we please vote? And that passes 4-0 with one person absent. Okay, now we're going to discuss the investment policies of the city of Lompoke. And Brad Wilke, our Finance Services Director?
Mayor, council members. What I'm going to, I'm going to go over this a little bit differently than the staff report. The staff report has all the information regarding the investment policy, and the investment policy is here. What I'm going to go over is more about what has changed in the past few years. Several years ago, this policy was required by the state to be adopted each and every year, even if there was something, or hardly anything, changed to our, either our policy or our practices in investments. That is the case this year. There's, I just did a couple little cleanups to the policy, but nothing substantive, and the actual investment practices that we're doing this year are no different than they have been in the past. We're not currently investing in corporate bonds or things like that. Almost all of our investable money are in a fund that is maintained and is under our control, but is maintained and managed by the state. What I would like to mention is that around 2003, the state changed the rules to say, you will have an investment policy adopted by your board every year to Umay. And the primary reason they did that was because the will and a may caused them to not have to reimburse us for the cost of managing our investment policy. So it was more of a cost item on the state side than it was anything about renewing and revising your policies. I thought it was a good idea to bring it to you today because, obviously, there's new people on the council, and I wanted to bring to your attention that there is an investment policy. The policy is very conservative, and at this point in time, our investments are even more conservative than that. One question I was asked was, LAIF, the local agency investment fund, which we have most of our investable money in, is, got a policy that's slightly, has the potential to be slightly outside our policy, but right now... slightly outside our policy, but right now they invest in, mostly in treasury bills and treasury bonds, so they're much more conservative. And it's the nature of what's going on out there today. People are staying away from higher risk items until the economy gets back on a square footing, and that is the case here for us as well. We have the capability and the wherewithal to do investments in-house, and that's part of the policy. We choose not to do that right now for a couple reasons. We don't think we can get much better investment returns than the state can with their multi-billion dollar investment pool, because we're just part of that. But the other part of it is resources. The person in my department that would normally be assigned this is, that position is currently vacant. So instead of trying to do more with less resources, we're relying on the state to take care of our investment portfolio. This last quarter, that investment rate, and it's common throughout the country, our returns are close to 0.5%, which is, back in the day, you'd have passbooks at 5%. So this is much less than that, but that's just a, again, a matter of the economy and how we're using some of our national resources to keep rates down, to try to help the economy get started again. And that's more of the reason why I brought this to the council today than having any kind of state mandate that it has to come to the council. We've been continuing the annual renewal review of the policy probably for five or six years since that mandate has disappeared, and one request or suggestion that I would make would be, possibly in the future, make it come back to the council but not, not as often unless there is a requested change to the policy. So that's one thing I would make a suggestion to. There's, there's no real need to make any kind of change to the recommendation because the two resolutions talk about the 2011 policy, but in the actual action of the resolution, it's silent on how long they are effective for. One last item is that in the agenda, it talks about the city council adopting the two resolutions. It's got to be the city council adopting the city resolution and the agency board adopting the agency resolution. They're identical in all means, except we have two separate policies, one for each agency. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Could you, when we talked about this the other day, you mentioned the fact that we had made good financial decisions at a point to move out of that market, number one, and I think you should share that with the public, and number two, that if we did go back into investing, the cost would be greater than, or the, the return would be less than the cost of filling the vacant positions. Would you share that?
That part is true. The, the, how do I say this? In around 2007, 2008, I believe you guys got in your council box the monthly report, which is part of the policy that you'll get a quarterly report. We do it once a month just because it's, just is easy. And going back with that report, back to about 2008, was when we had an active policy portfolio of commercial paper and governmental items like treasury bills. We gradually got out of that at about the same time that the economy kind of fell apart. So that was probably a little bit of judicious decision-making on our part, but also a little bit of, that's when they expired, and it was a good time not to be in there. So that led us to have the ability to keep the money in our two LEIF accounts, and that's where it's been since that time. And going forward, if we were to rehire a revenue manager, this would not nearly be out there, whole entire job, but that revenue manager would be, is one of the reasons we're keeping that vacant is to help the budget for 1113, so, or 9/11. So filling up a position would be a supervisory position. It has the supervisory job over most of the department in my area, so it would have, it has a lot of duties besides just investments, but it would be a fairly well-paid job to do those activities. And right now, we're just choosing not to fill it.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Thank you. Now for public comment. Who would like to speak on this subject and have a, or has a question on this subject?
Mayor Lynn, city council. I pulled up the staff report on that. When I read through, a thought I had is, a few years back, the city council, in one of its economy moods, did away with the position of city treasurer. As some of you know that lived here for a long time, we used to have a city clerk, city treasurer, city attorney, and city administrator, and did away with the treasurer. So when I read this, I see that that makes reference to the treasurer and his staff. I met Mr. Wilke just a few minutes before he opened, and he reminds me that we still have the title, it's just that he has that now. So when it makes reference to the city treasurer and staff, I guess that would be probably the financial division. The question I had on page 15 is the, under the meanings of the words, it said, "The Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation, FDIC, sets a limit currently of 1,000." I believe they went to 25,000 or 250,000. Because banks, people were only putting 100,000 in one bank and then another money in another bank, because it was only insured up to 100,000. And I believe the banks have gone to, to 250,000 on that, so it'd just be housekeeping. Thank you.
You didn't introduce yourself, Mr. Skyler.
Will Skyler, I live here in Lompoc.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this subject? Mr. Wilke, could you answer that question Mr. Skyler raised? Or take it under advisement?
Well, he's absolutely right that it's not 100. I just don't know if it's temporarily higher than 250 or not, so I'll research that and make that minor change as, when we get it back to the resolution.
City attorney, we could pass this with the understanding that Mr. Wilke would insert the correct number. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions from the council? One of the suggestions that we might want to consider, just as a, a matter of understanding, is that this would come back to the council perhaps every two years after the election, when the new council members are seated for review, or if there was a, there was a substantive change in the policy. Would that be acceptable to, to everyone? Okay. Do we need to make an amendment to the document? Okay, good. Okay, are there any other questions or comments on this? Would someone like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recommend that staff, or staff recommends, no, I'd like to recommend, that city council and the agency board adopt city resolution number 5691, parentheses 11, and the agency resolution number 11146, approving investment policies for the city of Lompoc, Lompoc Redevelopment Agency, with the noted change on page 15.
I'll second it. Just a moment's clarification. My copy says 10-146. Different in the front? Okay. I'm good with it either way. Ah, there we go. Okay, so the resolution itself has a, has a typo on it? Not. The, the actual resolution has 10-146 on it, and the staff report has 11-146. I didn't catch it. We will assume that the appropriate number will be assigned. Are there any other comments or discussion on this? All right, let's go ahead and vote. And that passes 4-0 with one absent.